So I think we'll begin our Economic Development Authority meeting. I will call the meeting to order. Can you do roll call, please?
Certainly Commissioner Rogg. Commissioner Dumalag.
Here.
Commissioner Broussard.
President.
Commissioner Ferris.
Here.
Commissioner Bowden.
Here.
President Budd.
Here.
All right, first thing, we have an agenda in front of us. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the most, the agenda is approved. There are just a couple items on the agenda. One is the minutes from our June 2th EDA meeting. Are there any changes to those minutes? Do I hear a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes of June 2nd are approved. Last item tonight is a consent item, a resolution approving the grant agreement with Hennepin County related to the Beltline Station redevelopment in Ward 1. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, please.
Mr. President.
Yes, it's nice to see us getting additional funding from Hennepin County towards the Beltline Station. So, I'm happy we've agreed to accept that money.
Not a tough task, right? Any other comments?
I'm also happy we've decided to accept that money. And pleased that they were successful, yes, in their efforts to secure additional funding for this expensive project. That's all.
Other comments? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved. We have no public hearings, no regular business on EDA, and no communications and announcements. So at this time, I will adjourn the Economic Development Authority meeting.
It is now 6:14, a minute early, but I think everybody is waiting to get started. So, Kim, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bowden.
Here.
Councilmember Ferris.
Here.
Councilmember Broussard.
President.
Councilmember Budd.
Here.
Councilmember Dumalag.
Here.
Councilmember Rogg.
Mayor Mohammed.
Here. All right, today, we will start the city council meeting on a somber note. This past Saturday, we woke up to the horrible news that the Minnesota House Representative, Melissa Hortman, and her husband have been shot and killed, and that Minnesota Senator John Hoffman and his wife have been attacked in their homes. We express our deepest condolences to the families, friends, colleagues, on the loss of Representative Hortman and her husband. Representative Hortman was a true public servant who devoted her legislative career into improving the lives of Minnesotans while Mark supported her in that endeavor. So please join me for a moment of silence to honor Representative Melissa Hortman and Mark Hortman. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. As we move on to our meeting tonight, I have some comments I wish to share before we adopt the agenda. We were heartened on Sunday to hear that Senator Hoffman and his wife, Yvette, were awake and expected to recover. We wish them a full recovery and send our well wishes to their families and friends as they support the Hoffmans in the days, weeks, and months ahead. We also want to express our support for the cities of Brooklyn Park and Chaplain who experienced this shocking incident. It is thanks to their quick action and to the actions of local law enforcement and first responders of those cities that the Hoffmans are expected to survive and that the suspect was identified before further harm was done. It will take time for these communities which were terrorized by these events to recover. We are here and stand with you. I also want to take a moment and send my love, my peace, to all of the House Representatives and to the senators who are experiencing this massive tragedy and who were on this heinous list. We are grateful to local, state, and federal law enforcement who tracked and arrested the suspect Sunday night. Thank you to our police department for monitoring these events over the weekend, for staying in touch with elected officials who live within our city, and for those who provided extra patrols so that we and other elected officials feel supported and as safe as possible in our homes. While more will be learned in the days to come and the weeks to come, by all accounts, these were targeted acts of political violence. We want to take this time to state that we condemn violence of any kind, including political violence. Civilized political discussion and disagreements are the foundations of a democratic society. We, as a council, will continue to uphold the values of civil discourse and mutual respect in these chambers. We appreciate our residents, regardless of their political point of views or their opinions on topics, who join us here in these chambers, in any other venue, to regularly make their voice heard respectfully and constructively. I encourage all of our residents to continue to consider ways to act individually, or ways, to find ways that we can act individually to encourage a peaceful exchange of ideas and opinions in both our public and private lives. Our city, our state, and country depend on us, the people, to preserve what we hold most dear in our democracy. So thank you again for joining me in that moment of silence, and thank you for all that you do. It is a hard job to do, and it is even much harder when heinous things like that happens. It is hard to move on to the business at hand, but we must because that's the job. All right, moving on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Moving on to, on a lighter note, we have the retirement of one of our esteemed employees, Brian Hoffman. Brian, I am, I'm going to invite you up, and I'm going to read your proclamation. Feel free to stand, sit, wherever you want to do, it is your day. Recognizing the contributions of and expressing appreciation to Brian Hoffman, Building and Energy Director. Whereas Brian Hoffman began his employment with the city of St. Louis Park in October 19, 1998, and served over 26 years as the Building and Energy Director. And whereas Brian was a steady presence of leadership in, on the leadership team, who was always willing to offer historical context and a yogi-like mind, or yogi-like calm, I should say. And whereas Brian was always a team player and focused on the common good, and whereas Brian was a co-go-to resource for the minutes, the state of Minnesota and the league of Minnesota cities regarding legislative issues concerning building and permitting. I'm assuming that's your grandson? Yeah? He has a lot to say, and he should take a microphone. Honestly, I would welcome it, I would welcome it. Whereas Brian led his department through a myriad of legal iterations over the years, including health inspections, taxi licensing, facility improvements, and at the same time developed a robust building and housing inspection program. And whereas Brian championed sustainability through the creation of the Sustainability Division, which supported the city's strategic priority relating to environment and sustainability. And whereas Brian excelled at working with residents to address concerns and always maintain a calm demeanor while focusing on the end goal of solving problems. And whereas Brian was the last person, the last person we know who carried a flip phone, wow. What is a flip phone? No, you do not have it! Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen! And whereas Brian is looking forward to spending his retirement years at his cabin with his family and watching his grandson grow, and now therefore let it be resolved that the City Council of the city of St. Louis Park, Minnesota, by this resolution and public record, would like to thank Building and Energy Director Brian Hoffman for his great contributions over 26 years of service to the city of St. Louis Park, and wish him the best, the very best, in his retirement. Thank you so much. Council, if you, huh? Brian, before you say something, I know, I'm expecting a speech, before you say something, I want to invite the council to say a couple of words, and then, I know a couple of words are, a couple of people here want to say words as well, so, yeah. Any council? Yep, go ahead.
Taxi licensing, I didn't know that one. Also, think of all the time you saved having a flip phone instead of a smartphone. Brian, I searched for emails. On the occasion of tonight, I searched for emails that you and I have exchanged over the years to remind me of all the things you've helped me with over the past eight years. The list is so impressive. You helped me help residents with issues of noise pollution, light pollution, air pollution, too many RV trailers on one lot, messy construction sites, gas-powered leaf blower noise, the condition of rental properties, the condition of owner-occupied properties, the strict nature of inspections in our community, illegal Airbnbs, they're all illegal, fats, oils, and greases, mysterious, pause for that one, aka fog, a lot of work went into that, thank you. I remember the pictures very well, I can't unsee those. Mysterious oily water in the street, request to remove shrubs, broken elevators at West End, airplane noise, train noise, unlicensed bakeries, unlicensed daycares, and that was about 10 minutes of searching for emails between you and me, Brian. The list is so long and expansive. And this was all before you became the head of Building and Energy, where you brought your passion for sustainability to support us in working toward our sustainability goals. Brian, thank you for all of that and more. You have been accessible, personable, fair-minded, patient, confident, kind, caring, capable, a kind, caring, capable city employee. When I asked you for help with something, I always knew I could rely on you to get it done. You were professional at all times, representing the very best in our city. You will be missed. All the best to you and your family in your retirement. Thank you.
Brian, I got to meet you a little over 12 years ago when I first ran for city council, and everything that council member Rogg said is true. You've been steady, responsible, even keel all the time, and that's really great in dealing with constituent problems on a regular basis, which I know you did, on behalf of us and the city. And I've gotten to know you a bit personally, too, and I love hearing stories about your cabin, and now your grandson, and I'm happy to have heard from him tonight, too. And I just wish you the best in your retirement. I'm sad to see you go, but this is really a great opportunity for you to enjoy the rest of your life. Thanks.
Yep, go ahead, council member.
Great. Congratulations, Brian, and you've always been such a great resource for me. You know, when questions come up about why can't we do this, and it's anything safety-related, regulatory also gets a bad rap because there's so many strict requirements, but I really see you and the work that you've done making our city safe. And so when people come into our buildings, and it's new, and they can be rest assured that this is a safe place for them to occupy, so I really thank you for that. And also, I've always appreciated your candor, your ability to pick up the phone and say, this is, I'm gonna have to walk you through this, and you've always done so with great patience and candor. So congratulations, from one only child to another and another. You'll have just a fulfilling Brian 2.0 after this.
Any others? Go ahead, council member.
So Brian, I just met you a little over three years ago, but I remember the first time I did and learned you were Building and Energy Director, but also had sustainability. And I remember thinking, how could he be serious about sustainability when he has all that other stuff on his plate? And in those three and a half years, I have seen you time and again at the various Minnesota Cities Climate Coalition calls, anytime we have a concern about leaf blowers or such, you're at the table to discuss us through them. And I really am, I really admire your commitment across all of the areas of your broad expertise. So, thank you so much.
If there's none others on the council, Kim, I believe you'd like to say a couple of words.
I would, yes, thank you, mayor. It's not often that we have a department head retire, and so, it's often I get to do this. After 26 years, it's really hard to capture the impact that Brian has had. It's not just on the city, but on the people who've worked along him, and we can see a number of them in the room here today. He led a department that evolved again and again, as we talked about, and stayed current and up to that change, and he's always been steady through that change and focused on the greater good. So, to Brian's family, to Marjorie, to Madeline, to Clayton, to Dean, thank you for sharing him with us. We know that it's a lot of late nights, it's a lot of weekends, and your commitment to the city of St. Louis Park is also appreciated. Brian, thank you for your leadership, your calm presence, your unwavering commitment to your coworkers and to the community. You've left a lasting legacy here. Congratulations. I believe Cindy Walsh also wants to say a few words.
Well, I think I now am the staff person that's worked with Brian the longest, so for the full 26 years. So, in the 26 years that I've worked with Brian, I think there's been some consistent themes that I wanted to share with you. First and foremost, he's always a very stylish dresser.
Yes, he is.
Didn't let us down again tonight. He is a calm and steady presence in the midst of change and uncertainty. Brian's unwavering ability to just remain calm and take and assess the situation is something that I've always admired. He's a team player, he'll do what needs to get done, and he'll bring his expertise to the table. He's a champion of sustainability, as many of you have mentioned. He's a master at resolving resident issues. So as most people may or may not know, not all residents get along. And not all residents agree with our code compliance and inspections, or want to even pull permits. So Brian has had conversations with many residents over the years, and I would think, I can't think of one that hasn't been resolved. He might be leaving us with one or two, but it's not because, we may, we'll bring him back to finish those up. And I have to say, I want to continue to give him time, a bad time by his flip phone, because I've never seen anybody resist an iPhone like this man has. So, you learn that you have to track down Brian, you want to talk to him, you want to email him, texting is not his favorite thing, Teams is not his favorite thing, and when, I don't know if it was Samsung or who came out with a new flip phone, Brian was ecstatic. So, he's been able to maintain that. Most of all, I want to thank Brian for his ability to always listen. He's always been a great listener, and that's something that I really appreciate about you, Brian. So, congratulations, and I hope you enjoy every bit of your retirement, and I know you're gonna spend a lot of time in Tofti and on the North Shore. So, thank you for everything you've done.
Well, we're not done yet, because you've brought some folks out of retirement and back into these chambers. I know that a couple of folks also want to say, I don't know who wants to go first, but...
Always defer to the mayor.
All right. Mayor Spahnem.
Mayor's deferring to the representative.
All right, for, right here, my friend. You want, you can stand over there, you can stand over there, okay, go ahead. My bad for the disrespect.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Larry Kraft. I'm formerly sitting on the city council now. Oh, no, it's not, yeah.
He came up.
I'm a little, I'm a little rusty. Yes, okay, so I'm Larry Kraft, I used to sit on city council here, and I'm now the state representative for most of St. Louis Park. A quick side note, I do want to also express my sincere thanks to the St. Louis Park Police Department with everything that happened over the past few days. They helped to keep all of us safe, and so just really appreciate you all. Brian, you know, something that council member Budd said jogged a memory for me. I remember when first hearing that the energy group was coming under buildings, I'm like, really? Does that? And it made, it has made so much sense. I have so appreciated working with you while on council, you know, really breathing life into the work that we did do around sustainability. And then it was really fun, because I worked with you lobbying the state government on building code stuff, and you taught me so much, and we didn't quite get it done that year when I was with you on the lobbying side, and then I got to go be on the state government side and actually pass the stuff that we were working on. And, you know, you all, you know, are gonna miss Brian here and think, wow, he's so influential here, but let me tell you, in St. Paul, on these issues, on building stuff, I remember someone saying to me, hey, do you know that there's a guy from St. Louis Park you should know? I'm like, oh, Brian? Oh, yeah, that, Brian Hoffman. So Brian is so well-respected around this state, and is looked for, for his guidance and his expertise. And I have continued to use Brian over the past several years to help pass other legislation around buildings, and just to learn as I'm working on other areas, and I hope I can continue to do that, you know, call it, I do have your phone number, your flip phone number. So Brian, I just, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you for your service to St. Louis Park and to Minnesota, and you will be missed, and I wish you the best in your retirement.
Jake Spahnem, 3978 Dakota Avenue South.
I know he's been waiting to say that.
I sat in this room for 12 years, and I always thought to myself, I wonder what that feels like.
You're supposed to be over there in that case.
Fair enough. This is, I think, the first time I've been back in this room in over a year and a half, and it's, it's a bittersweet, but I didn't want to miss this. And I just wanted to say, first off, thank you to Brian, and share a couple of thoughts for those of you who are here, and most of you know, for those of you who are watching from home, building the community that you want is a team effort. It is a combination of three big groups. Your neighbors, who tell you what they need from the city, a council that needs to set the priorities for those needs, and a professional staff that implement the decisions that the council makes in policy to realize those needs for your neighbors. It is rarely easy or straightforward, but in their best moments, professional staff give you excellent, informed, professional analysis, objective opinions, and they acknowledge their bias, their professional bias when they have one. I always felt, in the 12 years that I was sat at that table, I always felt that, Brian, you modeled every one of those values. You made me a better mayor, you made this council a better decision-making group, and you made our community a better place to live. You were thoughtful, you were informed, you were creative, and you have a great laugh. Thank you for all of your work. And as I have frequently sort of closed conversations like this and closed my own when I left this, this body, it's a family business. And so thank you to your family and your friends who have given their time away from you so that we could steal him and make our community a better place. So thank you to all of you as well. Thank you.
All right, that is all I had on my list, but if anybody else will care, oh, sorry, Tom, I'm so sorry. Oh my God, I'm sorry, come back, come back, Tom. Ladies and gentlemen, our former city manager, esteemed city manager, Tom Harmoning.
How soon they forget, how soon. And I have not filled out a blue card, but my name's Tom Harmoning, 1220 Blue Bill Bay Road, Burnsville. And, Mayor, I was wondering if we could suspend the three-minute...
You can have all day.
I will not take all day, I'll just take a few minutes. Thanks for the opportunity to talk to you about Brian and my experience with him. I think some of you may not know me, I worked here for a while as CD director and then as city manager, so I had the opportunity to work with Brian for a very, very long time, since he started here in 1998. I started in 1995. I've heard people identify various attributes that Brian has, and I think you all did a very good job of that. I think they're very accurate. Some things that I would add, great problem solver, I think some of you might have mentioned that, great working with the residents and trying to figure out solutions that maybe they didn't both agree with, but it worked. Or if there were a code issue that seemed difficult to resolve, let's say it was remodeling a commercial building, always willing to come and think about different ways to solve the problem and meet the needs of that business owner, and also meet the needs of the public safety of the community. He's patient, much more patient than I was, a team player, without question, I think Cindy mentioned that, and he has a very calming demeanor, and I think several of you mentioned that, and believe it or not, that was really important for me. As city manager, I could get a little spirited at times, so having his calming demeanor at, especially when we met one-on-one and I was venting, was very, very helpful to me. But the one word that I think describes him the best is his versatility. He's the most versatile guy I have ever met. He knows a lot about a lot of things. And, you know, a versatile person brings a range of skills to the table, so he has a lot of skills and gifts, he just knows a lot about stuff. They're adaptable, they're curious, they're open to change, and always willing to step on and take on new responsibilities. And I think that describes Brian to a T, without question. Over the years, I've asked Brian to take on new roles while still managing his existing responsibilities. So he had a department that he was running... So he had a department that he was running, and then I or others would come up with this bright idea of, "Well, maybe the inspections Department would be a good place to take on these new responsibilities." And some examples of that is taking on the oversight of facilities maintenance. Now, I know that's changed, but at the time, and you had that responsibility for a number of years, that is a big job of keeping our facilities in the condition they are. And as a part of that, he would play a major role in some of the major, big capital projects we took on, the MSC, the Nature Center, City Hall, just to name a couple. He also, I think willingly, agreed to take on the responsibilities of helping lead our environment sustainability efforts with Emily's help, and I think has done a remarkable job. That is a huge amount of work, and I think you were just well-suited for that, and I'm glad that you did that. Something that many of you may not know, and he had to fight for this honor or this job responsibility, but that was being the point person with the MAC and getting complaints about planes flying over St. Louis Park. I asked other department directors if they wanted to play that role, and for some reason, I didn't get a response. It was just crickets. And Brian agreed to do that, and I think has done a remarkable job. I've learned a lot about airplane operations and RNAV and all sorts of things having to do with our airport and how it affects St. Louis Park. When it came to leading the inspections Division, or Department, I should say, in and of itself, Brian played a critical role in shifting the department's culture. He improved both operational and customer service needs of the department. And as noted in the resolution, I think that was a good point, he really played a significant role at the state legislature and in other places on code-related matters. I know he testified many times, very well-respected for his knowledge in that particular area. So that guy's versatile. I mean, he can do so many different things. You have other people in this room who are versatile too, but we're talking about Brian, and versatility is definitely his strength. So Brian, without a doubt, this organization and the community you've served are better and stronger because of your contributions. Your public service truly has made a lasting difference, and you will be missed. Congratulations on a very successful career, and best wishes as you begin this next chapter of your life. Well done.
That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Less than three minutes. Anybody else would like to say? I don't want to miss anybody else, y'all. Just wanted to make sure I got everybody. All right. Brian, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. That was more than enough. That was overwhelming, actually. It filled the heart. Thank you, everyone, so much. Means a lot, having worked here over the years and to have had to work with all of you, past councils, city managers, and other employees here that I've known. I knew what I was gonna say earlier today. You know, I wanted to wear a suit tonight, because it goes back to a story. When I started here, it was actually probably August of 98, and I had seen... Actually, I'd been told, I wasn't even looking for a job. I had been told about this opening. And I was talking with Marjorie, and we were walking around the block, said, "I don't know." You know, "They all wear suits, and they're all dressed up, and it's this formal city," you know? And she says, "Oh, you can do it. You should do that." So put in the application, then she said, "But you gotta learn how to dress." And so, from that, we went shopping. Suits, not this suit. But... But, and over the years, she would find these beautiful ties that I just adored. And I actually never got mine to getting these ties for Father's Day. But it was just so interesting, because I came in and got the job, and it was a very formal organization at the time. But over the years, I realized just how those decisions in life, how all of a sudden they set things into motion. You know, if I had probably come in in my khaki pants or whatever, who knows? I may never have got the job. But, so the support I've had from my wife and then daughter over the years has been truly amazing, the guidance. And they both have heard about some of the various events when I come home at night. But it's been fulfilling. Everything that I've done here, I think the biggest thing is enabling me to have the opportunity to try to provide, you know, whatever talents apply them, the skills, the ideas, it's all in the name of public service and how good can we do it? When I got out of high school, I had three goals. I was asked this recently by somebody. It was a younger person saying, "Well, jeez, what were your goals, you know, before you got into the career, you know?" And they were just, you know, "Good question to ask for a young person thinking about avenues." And I said, "Well, I had three goals, very clear when I got out of school." I said, "One, I'm not going to wear a suit. Two, I'm not being in an office, and I'm certainly not going to supervise people." Wasn't much, but I failed. And over... It is really interesting, because when I got into a career, actually, it was a land survey. I was working for Ed Sunday Land Survey, and he was actually Milt Sunday's brother, and he had an engineering surveying firm. And I had worked for him for a bit, and I thought, "This is great. I can be outside and be a land surveyor." And so, after spending time out all winter, walking through the swamp with the rod and the mosquitoes in the summer, I had a nice chat with him. I said, "I don't know if I really want to do this." And he knew I wanted to go back to college. And so, he said, "You know, I know somebody who works at the city," you know, in their engineering department, "and, you know, I can just tell he's very interested in public service. That seems like something you might be interested in doing. It would seem like it would fit good with what way you talk." And all of a sudden, I thought about that, and it sunk. And the next job I got was with Eden Prairie, and then Bloomington, and Mounds View, Inverbrook Heights, and here. And I spent my whole life in public service, and it's exactly what I needed to do. Without a doubt, I couldn't have imagined anything else that was fulfilling to where I felt like I was actually trying to make a difference, and I could just help people. And that's what I've tried to do over the years. And it's been very fulfilling. I have to thank Tom and first Charlie, City Manager Charlie Meyer, too, and all the people I work with, because they've always encouraged me over these years. And it was just nice having confidence from the people around you that basically, you know, encouraged you to go on and learn. And so, I really appreciate that. Everybody I work with, it's just been so fulfilling. So what I tell people now, when they say, "Hey, I don't know what to do," I say, "Hey, have you thought about public service?" And Clayton, son-in-law, has been working at the city of St. Paul now for two years in building inspection and plan review.
Wow, that's amazing.
So hopefully, he's off to a wonderful start. The resolution was just great. I want to read that again. And I've still got a couple of weeks. July 9th is my final day here, and there'll be a party in the afternoon. And with that, thank you once again.
All right. Thank you so much, Brian, and we look forward to working with you in the next couple, in the month, in the next coming month or so. And congratulations again, and thank you to your family for being here with us. All right, moving on to the proclamation. We have a proclamation observing Juneteenth in 2025. Whereas Juneteenth has been observed as Black Americans, by Black Americans, by the... Wow, okay, let me back up. Hold on. Whereas Juneteenth has been observed by Black Americans as the day when the word of the Emancipation Proclamation granted freedom from slavery finally reached Glaston Bay, Texas, on June 19th, 1865, two years after it was written into law by President... I almost said President Abraham Lincoln in January. I almost said Barack Obama. My bad, y'all. It's gonna take me a minute. All right. President Abraham Lincoln, on January 1st, 1863. "Juneteenth marks as the beginning of freedom from chattel slavery, opening possibilities for generations of Black people in the United States. And whereas recognition of Juneteenth as observed in the City Hall..." I mean, City... Okay, you guys, it's been a long day. Let me say that. Okay, I genuinely can't read. Give me one second. "Whereas Juneteenth marks as the beginning of freedom from chattel slavery, opening possibilities for generations of Black Americans in the United States. And whereas recognition of Juneteenth as observed City Holiday, as a City Holiday in St. Louis Park, is a significant step in understanding the painful legacy of slavery, which continues to have impacts on our society to this day. And whereas the city of St. Louis Park's inaugural Juneteenth was celebrated in 2022 and continuously continues annually with the 2025 celebration being Juneteenth Series, inviting public to participate with the Wounded Healers production. Freedom, Fun, and Festival Beats rolling at the Rock Stories for the Juneteenth with Black Storytellers Alliance. And whereas Juneteenth commemorated as the Freedom Day, celebrating countless efforts made by abolitionists, both enslaved and free, in the fight for freedom from white slave owners. And whereas Black Americans continues to make significant contributions to Minnesota's culture, economy, education, health, housing, and government. And whereas challenging anti-Black racism in our communities honors the legacy of Juneteenth and contributes to our strategic priorities of being a leader in racial equity and inclusion in order to create a just and community for all. Now, therefore, let it be known that the mayor and the city council of the city of St. Louis Park, Minnesota hereby observe Juneteenth 2025 in our community." I know that was a tough start, and I apologize, y'all, because this is a really, this is a real important proclamation. And so, I do want to take a moment and celebrate and observe this day for a lot of reasons. I know that a lot of people are under the impression that slavery ended when slavery ended, when that's not the case. And so, in the recent years, it's been a long time coming, but in the recent years, I'm extremely proud that states all over, and especially our state, has been making Juneteenth a holiday, not only celebrated by Black Americans, but all of Minnesota and all of St. Louis Park. And so, I apologize for stuttering through that. It's... Yeah. Any others?
You did great, Mayor.
Thank you.
I just want to note that I really appreciate, have appreciated historically, the Juneteenth celebrations that Park and Rack and others have put together. I think they're award-winning. And I also really like that we're shaking it up a little bit this year and adding some new things for people to try. So kudos to staff for that, and check it out.
Yeah, this stuff's really important, and it just, as you were reading, it just kind of hit me how vitally important it is for us to continue not to just tell our history, our whole history correctly, but we also really do need to continue to fight to be able to tell our whole history correctly, because there's a lot that want to bury these things and deny these things, and this is certainly one of them. And so, we've got work to do out there, and this proclamation, I think, just kind of woke me up to that again. So thank you. And also, as usual, if you're watching out there or have access to our packet, there's some resources in there. It's really worthwhile to go out and learn more, rather than just hear a proclamation. Go out and learn more about Juneteenth and about our true American history that we all need to own.
There are schools somewhere in the United States that are teaching false histories, so it's important that we, as you said, learn our entire history. All right. Without any other comments on that? No? All right. Let's move on to the minutes. Are there any amendments to the minutes? We have two minutes. January 2nd, 2025, city council meeting, and minutes of June... Did I say January? I meant June 2nd, 2025, and then another June 2nd special study session.
Move approval. Of both.
Second.
All right. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? No? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. I see a couple of consent items. I didn't hear anybody, I didn't hear from anybody wanting to pull anything off, so I will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved, seeing that there is no public hearing, no regular business communications and announcements. I know that it was Father's Day yesterday, so happy Father's Day to all the dads in the room and all around St. Louis Park and our state. Father's Day is just as important as Mother's Day. I'm kidding. It is important. All right, any, do you have any announcements?
I do have one announcement for the community. We are getting ready to start our construction on Louisiana Avenue. That construction will start the week of June 30th. We don't have the exact construction schedule yet, so we're gonna make you come to the website to find that. It should be posted on the project's website. We have it as a Bitly. You can also navigate there through our city website. But really, the best way to stay in touch with what's happening is to sign up for a weekly email update to get work on what's, details on what's been completed, what's in progress, and then a two-week look ahead. So encourage everyone, as we start this, to get on the train now.
Any other communications or underwear announcements? Okay. All right. Seeing that, this meeting is adjourned.